I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting.
You don't need it.
That doesn't apply to applicants.
Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. Roll call, please, Sherri.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello absent, Commissioners Quilisi?
Here.
Merk?
Here.
Nolan?
Here. Great. Commissioner?
A little less strict tonight.
Commissioner Quilisi, could you please lead us on the pledge?
Certainly. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is Public Communications, which is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I don't have any speaker's cards for this time. Does anybody else want to speak on a non-agendized item? I'm going to guess no, and we're going to move on. We have no consent items, so now we're going to move on to our first public hearing item, which is Design Review Permit, DRP 16-01, for the modification to Design Review Permit, DRP 13-09, approved by the Planning Commission on September 4th, 2013, for construction of a second-story addition and residence remodel to a single-family residence located at 601 Crestview Drive, Assessor's Parcel Number 0230081400. The modifications requested include architectural design, roofline change, color change, and other miscellaneous changes. In addition, the applicant is requesting approval to add a detached, covered, outdoor barbecue structure at the rear of the house. The general plan designation for the property is medium-density residential, three to four dwellings per acre. The zoning classification of the property is single-family residential, R1. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to SEQA. Property owner Ernest Reide, architect Mark Shelnott, Representative Craig Young. This is an item that's continued from our July 6, 2016 Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to hear from staff, please.
So, thank you very much. So, as it says in your staff report, we're requesting that you continue this item. Actually, the staff report says to August 3rd. Staff doesn't believe that it'll be ready on August 3rd. We've had nothing to date from the applicant, and one of the issues that they need to do is complete some additional archaeological work for the project, for the barbecue, and so they do not. You're telling me they don't? They've done it?
You remember that it was a different project, you thought? It was not archaeological, and we changed it back to August 3rd. But we still, you are correct in the fact we have received nothing. But the archaeological is fine.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm working on so many projects, I don't know. But I was under the impression that this one was not, because it had, the paw and the consultation with the Native Americans was done after this?
It's the Fairway Lane project you're getting mixed up.
All right. Well, I'll check it, but my understanding is that they had issues because they're doing foundation and ground disturbance in the back, and that was one of the issues. But we haven't received anything. So, you can go ahead and continue it to August 3rd, and we can continue it again and again and again, or you can just put it out a couple of meetings.
Till they have some real data for us.
Because at this point, we've already had to notice the projects for the next meeting. Our agenda will be done, our agenda for the next meeting will be by next week. Staff just, it just puts us, it puts us so we can't work on other projects when we're waiting for someone to come in who hasn't come in.
Okay.
It's up to you guys.
Okay, well.
Does that make sense what I just said, or is, okay?
So, there's been no demonstrated activity around?
No, we had to call them to find out what was going on.
Okay, okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I noticed it's on our agenda for August 17th. Does that make sense? I mean, it's tentative, but...
Well, we went back and forth because, you know, we don't want to waste the commission's time either. We're trying to move projects forward and get not overly compacted agendas for you, but to fill them up, and we're, that's what happens when we get these kind of delays on projects. And they said they would be ready to go, and we made space for them, and we worked, we tried to save work on them, and now. So, it's really, I don't know how to advise you on it. It's really up to you.
Well, it seems to me that if there's been a lack of communication, then perhaps the best thing to do is just allow them to take the next step, and when they're, when they presented what it is that's been requested, then we can...
Re-advertise then?
Re-ad, re-notice and get them on the schedule.
That's fine.
Maybe we could amend your motion to continue this item to a date uncertain, pending communication from the applicant. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay. So, actually, somebody needs to, somebody needs to actually make that motion.
Okay, you were just suggesting.
We have to do, we have to deal with the item somehow.
Right. Yeah, we have to make a motion.
All right. So, I'll make, Jen?
All right.
All right. I'll make a motion that we continue to a date uncertain, Design Review Permit, DRP 16-01, for modification, Design Review Permit, DRP 13-09, until we wait, you know, further notice from the applicant.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, moving on. This is the next public hearing item. It's actually two, correct? Not three?
Item two.
Item two, okay. Which is a lot line adjustment, LLA 16-01, a lot line adjustment between two subject parcels. The proposed lot line adjustment would increase, would be an increase of parcel one by 2670 square feet, and parcel two reduced by the same. The purpose of the lot line adjustment is to grant land from parcel two that has traditionally been used by parcel one as a rear yard area at 18 and 32 Tower Mina Lane, Assessor's Parcels 0170343255 and 0170343295. The general plan land use designations of both properties are medium-high-density residential, and the zoning classification of both properties are single-family residential, medium-density, R1. Categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to SEQA. Property owners Vincent J. and Lynn Francis and Tower Mina Theosophical Community, Inc. Like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you. So, I think actually what you read into the record probably is pretty succinct kind of paraphrase of what they're doing here, but, so, in the staff report, we have the general plan compatibility and the zoning ordinance consistency. One of the things that you need to note when doing a lot line adjustment is that the result in parcels need to be consistent. That's what we're looking for. So, when, so, the table down here gives you an idea of, and it's on page three of five, how big the R1 zone requires each parcel to be, and that parcel one and parcel two's compliance with that, those statistics. So, with that said, I think probably the one question that everyone has in their mind is, you know, how Terramina had, you know, such a small parcels, now we're making this one bigger. And I think that just gets back to, and I'm not really sure if it's really very clearly detailed out in the staff report, but Terramina is a little bit unusual in that the way it was approved, it was approved with an overall density calculation, and then a finite number of law, excuse me, a finite number of units that could be built on that overall land mass. And then those were distributed on lots that were smaller via the CUP. So, I think maybe there, that might be missing in the staff report exactly how they got to where they weren't as large as the zone district. Of course, it goes back to 1960s, so I guess we'd have to do research and see how it was back in the 1960s, too. But enough said, really what we get down to, and I think you can, a very descriptive graphic is the attachment C, where, and it's labeled Exhibit B on the top, but it's your Exhibit C down here, and it shows the 30 feet that's being gained into parcel one and removed from parcel two. So, I think that's all that really needs to be said. I think the issue with parcel number two is the disposition of that lot. Staff did do their general plan consistency to determine whether or not removing that 10,000, oh, I'm sorry, 2670, excuse me, 2670 square foot would have some substantial impact on that large vacant parcel, and it was, when you do the math, it does not drop below the allowable count of what that lot would be under the density. Again, with this overview of the fact that regardless of whether or not the density stays the same in that, in that, in that large lot, it's...
The number of parcels.
Right. It also doesn't change the fact that it's governed by that CUP. So, I just want to make that very clear. So, with that said, we just recommend approval of the lot line adjustment, I mean, yeah, lot line adjustment with the resolution that's provided in your staff report. I think that, it goes without saying, we don't, I mean, a lot line adjustment per the Subdivision Map Act is limited to the number of conditions that you really can put on it, and we've put these sort of descriptive ones that we normally put on development. They may or may not be something that is really appropriate because they're not, a lot line adjustment is an adjustment of a line. But since it's become sort of prudent for staff to put these on as a notification or disclaimer, that's really what they are, about the discovery of human remains, I mean, there isn't any development associated with a lot line adjustment, so...
There are the other provisions that are just protecting the city.
Right. So, you know, I don't know if there's, we also put the one about short-term transient rental. Again, that's kind of maybe, you know, if you wanted to remove those, you could. They're really just notifications beginning. Again, this is just more or less a paper issue with moving a lot line. There's no, you're not approving any development with this lot line adjustment.
Yeah. On the other hand, I believe the minimum lot size right now to have a second unit is 10,400.
Mm-hmm.
And parcel one now becomes 10,402. Maybe that's...
No, 10,009. 10,900.
10,900?
It's 10,900.
Okay.
They're very close.
Draw that remark.
And that, they're very close, and that is something that council has directed Planning Commission to look at somewhere, sometime in the future, so we don't know if that will change to their benefit. We just don't know at this point, but, so again, like I said, the conditions are sort of the standard conditions we place, but, you know, if you thought that those were a burden, you could remove them because the lots aren't compliant. And with that, that's all I have to offer.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Hi, Lynn Francis. So, essentially, all this is doing is making official what has been traditionally used. I bought the house 27 years ago, and the, and one side of the property was this big hill that was completely unusable, and the only usable space was this particular space. Terramina is built on a hill. It's cut off of a hill, and so our neighbors to the south are above us, our neighbors to the north are below us, and this field is below us, that empty lot is below us. So, we're kind of on this plateau by ourselves, and so if you walk into, well, out my backyard, your automatic assumption is that this is my backyard. We even fenced it for a while. It wasn't until about 10 years ago when we decided, our family had grown and we were going to build a second story, and then we had to get a, then we saw plans and went, wow, our backyard is, like, our property line is 10 feet outside of our back door. We, you know, there was a patio there, there was all kinds of stuff, that we planted trees, and so we went, wow, this isn't our backyard. And so, we went to Terramina and we said, would you sell it? And we've asked them a couple of times over the years, and they said no, and finally they said yes. And so, really, it's just the land that nobody else, I mean, I don't know how anyone else would use it because it's like...
It's on your plateau.
It's on my plateau. And so, we've really just put the lot line across the back of the plateau. Like, you walk out my yard, 30 feet away, the plateau ends, that's where the lot line will now be. It doesn't really change any usage at all, and so that's our plan. We understand that we are, that the lot is, does not give us the ability to add a second unit. We don't have any desire to add a second unit. We just want our backyard to be our own because we've got fruit tree back there, and we've got a brick patio back there, and we would like to maybe plant some more fruit trees or something, and it seems silly to continue to improve a piece of property we don't own.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much. I have one, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? No? I have one speaker card, Robin Gerber.
Thank you. Thanks for your...
Do you have another applicant, the other side of the applicant, like the Terramina side?
I will, I'll definitely ask if there's anybody else who'd like to speak. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for your service. I just have two points to make. I'm Robin Gerber. I live at 51 Terramina Lane, and I'm very happy for my neighbors to have their, to have that piece of their yard. What concerns me and other neighbors as well is whether the proverbial camel is sticking its nose under the tent in this way. Just last week, we had a very successful hearing with the historic district, and we hope to be a historic district, but what we heard from the developers or the corporation that controls this land is that they would like to develop that two-plus acres up there with multiple units, not the one unit that's zoned. I understand that lot line, while it's under the subdivision section, is not a subdivision. Nevertheless, it is a changing of the property and of the configuration of it, and I'm not as expert as all of you, but there is great concern that this could in some way open the door to then a greater subdivision, actual subdivision of the Mesa. So, that is point number one, and I guess, not that you don't do this, but I would like to ask that maybe you think about it some more or get some more direction from staff if you're not completely sure that it wouldn't, in fact, open the door to something that would be, you know, very bad for the community. My second point is this. I think there's a problem here that's violative just generally of public policy, and it's this. If you look at the contract for sale, which I guess is in the packet, Kathy?
Could you check?
There is a contract in there, and I think, I'm a retired attorney, but when I saw it, it gave me concern, and I think a public body should not approve something that where the underlying documents are violated, are possibly fatally flawed. The grantor on that contract is not just the Terramina Theosophical Community, that's on there, and then underneath the signature line for the grantor is TTMH, which represents a second corporation that may or may not own that parcel. I'm not sure, and I'm certainly not sure from the contract. And then there is a signature which is completely illegible with the word administrator next to it, which I have no idea what that means in terms of this particular corporation, nor do I know who signed it. So, you know, this is just an underlying problem I would point out to you as public commissioners. I think there's no, there's no rush to do this, I don't think. As I said, they've been dealing with this issue for a long time. It might be prudent to wait until the next meeting and be sure that there isn't some violation there of public policy by approving this. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
So...
I think you guys have that in your packet. It's part of the application packet.
Right. We don't have that, yeah.
You don't have that?
We don't have a contract of sale.
No. Well, and that really wouldn't be necessarily within our purview to review anyway.
It's not relevant. It's the lot line adjustment that's relevant, not the price that was paid for the additional land.
She's talking about the granting entities, as I understand it, so that...
Right. So, the issue we'd get to, and legal staff isn't here, but the issue we'd get to, I assume that you're talking about whether or not the signatures on the application are the valid signatures, if they have the authority to grant permission to entitle land, and, you know, we don't, normally, we, there's just some assumption that we do check that, you know, through the assessors, that the person is who the person is, but we don't necessarily get into whether if somebody's deferred that to an agent or representative, we don't get into their, their contract with them. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, there is some assumption that we just have that the person has the authority to sign, and it's really a private matter if someone's done something fraudulent to misrepresent that they are actually a person entitled to sign on an application if it really aren't, if that's what I'm understanding what the issue is.
Okay. Can you sit down, Robin, please?
And, oh, sure.
Okay. So, I'd like to ask the applicant, are you, can you step up, please?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to, are you, have you opened a formal escrow? I mean, are you, you have...
Yes, so we are, we have a title company that has given us all the title reports and rewritten and given us new land descriptions and all the title information, and we will be getting title insurance. I think that probably any, any risk falls on us, not on the city. I mean, essentially, what I understand is you would be approving our, moving the lot line, but when it comes to, to actually filing it and getting, and getting the property, that's a legal issue, a personal legal issue between the corporate, the owner of that larger lot and us, and that's on the title insurance company, the title company to verify that we're buying it from the people who really have the property.
Are you using...
And we have a representative of that organization here, if you'd like to ask her about that.
So, who, who wrote the contract?
An attorney in our case. We hired an attorney to write the contract.
Okay. Okay. So, I'd like to hear, anybody else who hasn't spoken, if they'd like to speak?
I think she, I think she answered the question. I mean, I don't know...
I'm not asking you to speak, I'm just saying if you'd like.
Yeah. I think, I trust her that she did the research and she did all the stuff, and I know we own the land, so I don't know what this is all about, but...
Okay.
Then do you want me to speak on, Chair, would you like me to speak on the other question?
Sure.
Okay. So, under the Subdivision Map Act, there is a section in the Subdivision Map Act that speaks to the exceptions to the Subdivision Map Act, and there's a whole list of them. And lot line adjustments, provided that they meet a certain criteria, you know, there's, you know, there don't create an additional lot, you know, there's a whole set of criteria. They are actually exempt from the Subdivision Map Act. So, it's an oddity. It sounds like it's, the rules are actually in the Subdivision Map Act, which then exempts it from itself. Kind of odd thing. But then we have our own rules and regulations on a, on a lot line adjustments. So, lot line adjustments, like I said when I gave the staff report, they're very unique, you know, cities are very hampered in what they can do with them, and they must approve them without excessive conditions, provided they meet this set of criteria. And in our, in our rules and regulations, that criteria is that the result in parcels have to be compliant, and we can condition them, to place conditions on them to be compliant, but that's what we look at. So, there's, so there's no, moving this lot line is really pretty straightforward under the State of California and the City of Ojai's rules. It's just that it wouldn't open the door for anybody to create an additional parcel because that's actually prohibited. Does that make sense? I mean, so, so they're just very different things, subdivision from a lot line adjustment.
Well, and they're also losing land. The larger parcel is losing land.
Correct. But that, but I think, so, there's no camel's nose under the tent, it's just that the only issue that staff was concerned about was whether or not the person who owned the larger parcel would come in and say that now that my land is smaller, I'm prohibit, I can't do what I originally thought we were going to do with it, that's under the CUP. But according to the number crunching, it appears as though it substantially stays the same.
Okay. Commissioner Merk?
I was just going to respond. When you went through the numbers originally, I don't think it's going to change the number of units that could be on that property, the larger property. If anything, it'll be reduced, but I don't even think it's reduced substantially enough to make any difference.
Right. So, the, so, I think that's the concern is that, is that because originally the density was spread over as a comprehensive plan, more or less, the idea would be that not to do something that changes that plan, that makes it difficult for you to perform what you were supposed to perform years ago under the CUP. But we couldn't find that that was an issue.
And we're not changing the number of parcels...
No.
...in this property, so there's no subdivision taking place.
Correct.
I did have one question. In, in the proposed resolution, one of the wherlasses says, "The proposed lot line adjustment does not propose any new construction," but over in the project-specific conditions, number three, it says, "Prior to the final map clearance, the owner of parcel one shall submit a building permit application for the shed." That sounds like construction.
Yeah, that's because it's already done. So, a couple of years ago, we built a storage shed attached to, up here? A couple of years ago, we built a storage shed attached to our house, and so when we, when we did the plot plan, the storage shed showed up, it's attached to the house. And so, I said, well, can we just apply for, like, what do we have to do? Apply for a permit for it? And he said, yes. So, we have now got someone who's drawing up plans for that, and we understand that prior to filing anything, we have to give you guys plans for that, but, but, like, there's a waiting list, essentially.
You're drawing up plans for an existing shed?
Yeah.
Okay. To, to make it a legal accessory building?
No, it's attached. It's attached, she says.
It's attached. It's only got three walls. It's attached to the outside of our garage.
But so, so, in fact, there...
So, if you want me to show you, I can show you where it is.
It doesn't, okay, I understand now. It doesn't propose any new construction, it proposes legalizing some existing construction.
Exactly. Right, yeah. Which we're happy to do.
So, because we are informal tonight, we only have you all here, I'm going to keep the public hearing open, and Robin, if you'd like to come back. Ordinarily, we don't do that, but if you'd like to step back up and say something.
Now, as I said, I'm happy for my neighbors to have the adjustment. I just am also very happy for you to discuss this on the record and for us to have it on the record. So, thank you.
Okay.
The law of unintended consequences is something that we always like to avoid and make sure that we have discussed at length, and I certainly was looking at the project with an eye toward that. So, and I understand what you're saying as far as, you know, the buyers and the sellers, I do think that that is a matter for title and escrow to ensure that everybody is who they say they are. I, of course, would make sure that there's no exceptions to coverage on your title insurance that would be a red flag, but of course, there wouldn't be. I mean, that just, there's, yeah, it just, just doesn't make sense, but I totally understand your concern, given everything that's been going on in the neighborhood. There's a lot of, a lot going on, and so, and then something comes from, from the side and you wonder, oh, you know, do I have to be nervous about this as well? So, I get it. But if there's no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to discuss amongst ourselves. Commissioner Quilisi?
It, it seems on the face of it that the two parcel owners are perfectly within their rights to exchange some property for other compensation. It doesn't change the number of parcels in the area, and it doesn't seem to impede either parcel owner from doing what they otherwise would have done without this lot line adjustment. So, I'm in favor.
Commissioner Merk?
I'm ready to propose a motion if anybody else is...
Unless you have something you'd like to say.
If John hadn't proposed that, I would have so...
Okay. Commissioner Merk, go for it.
I'll propose we adopt the required findings for lot line adjustment, LLA 1601, accept the SEQA exemption for LLA 1601, and approve LLA 1601 subject to the findings and conditions of approval.
All right. Well, I will second the motion.
Roll call.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Done.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. So, we have no discussion items tonight. We are going to skip right to our future agenda items. And we have, looks like, are you going to, do you do this part, too?[1776.98] Okay, so we have no discussion items tonight, we are going to skip right to our future agenda items. And we have, looks like, are you gonna, do you do this part too? Do you want to talk about this, or do you want me to talk about this?
Yeah, the future agenda items? No, I'm happy to.
Okay.
So we're, as you see in there, the 27th special meeting that we all negotiated has been canceled, that I believe is moving on to City Well, yes, postponed. Again, we, the contract that we had with David and Sergeant Planning only had a certain amount of public hearings, and so, you know, if we're not, the third workshop was to be conducted with the Planning Commission. That was a decision we all made because we felt that we had heard, heard from the neighbor, the neighbor, we had these special neighborhood meetings, and we wanted to have more of a workshop, Sherrett, at, at a regular special Planning Commission meeting with you all here, and then whoever wanted to show up and work on it, so it was actually kind of with, with, at a regular, I should say, regular time for Planning Commission, not your regular meeting. But, so that's been moved, taken off the request, and it's been requested that it go up to City Council. And so if that public hearing meeting is used, that was budgeted and into to go there, I don't know that there will be a budget to come back here. I don't know that to be true, I don't know. So at this point, you know, that, that's been on, kind of an unanswered question for a month or so, and staff is just waiting to hear from the city manager and council what they want to do. But I do know that there was only three meetings budgeted, so I don't know where going from that, from there, from here on that. And then on August 3rd, the, we have the DRP for 110 Canyatta Street, do we, we just went through all this today. We're moving this one, thank you, Sherri, to down the road, so we'll move that one, that one won't be ready. The 712 Drown will be coming before you on August 3rd. And I think that's it, right, Sherri? I think that's it. As you know, and we've been through this for the last couple of meetings, August 3rd takes place before August 9th, which is when your other two planning commissioners get seated, so we have some things that we don't have a quorum for, because Mr. Quilisi, or excuse me, Commissioner Quilisi has to recuse himself for one project, two of the cottages. And, and Commissioner Jagiello and Nolan have to recuse themselves for another project, so, so it's kind of been a juggling act, so we apologize for all the confusion, but, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we have a quorum, and Right. And so with that, I guess that's all I really have to say about that, we're moving those on, on August 17th. We are now working on the BMX Park down there on the Lower Libby Parking Lot, is this, am I saying that right, Sherri? And we're working on some environmental for that, we have a new, a couple of new projects. We have a time extension for a parcel map for 201 South Montgomery that is going to go to City Council, but it's got a DRP and a parcel map, right? Both, I believe. That dates back almost nine or 10 year, 10 years now or so, so I think '06 or '07 or something, so some of these things.
Time extension going to the City Council, though, why?
That's what
Did it come to the Planning Commission?
It came to the Planning Commission, and then, and then it gets final approval from the City Council.
Parcel map, and got a final approval from the City Council, so it goes back to the body who approved the project for their time extension.
So, and then the COP, CUP for 310 Aliso is for Bed and Breakfast, and that's right next to the hotel, that's the Sinido Hotel. And we continue to work on 601 Pearl Street, that's moving forward finally. We're getting to the nitty-gritty of that, it's going to, you did a concept review for it, I'm, I'm sure you remember, we finally are, just about to wrap up the environmental, we've got air quality done, and, you know, we're doing extensive consultation with the Native Americans, because this is an AB 52 consultation, so we're working on that. The 334 East Ojai, which you've probably, you've also seen, we're working on that, that's really a little bit more complex, because we're also an applicant on it, the City of Ojai is, so, so it's a little bit, a little bit more difficult processing, because it's a land swap, et cetera, et cetera. And we're working on this final trap map, map for Mallory Way, which you would have approved, the commission would have approved many years ago, and that's been sitting with a tentative map and working on that. So we have a lot in process, and will continue to do a lot of director's exemptions too, also, but we just wanted to give you kind of an idea, because it helps us if we go through kind of where the workload is now, for you to know when the Planning Commission-generated projects come forward, what time we have to work on them. Oh, and I would say then also, planning staff is also working on assisting Public Works and the Complete Streets Subcommittee with review of their Complete Streets draft, including getting, getting kind of the term sheet ready for them, for the, so it can go to City Council, et cetera, et cetera. Did I cover that right, Kathleen? I think so. Oh, I know you did. I know you did, you guys are always there right before the meeting. So there is a lot on our, there is a lot on our plate. We've just got done doing the Historic District with HPC, and that project will be moving forward to City Council, the same staff that works on it for you would be the same staff that's taking it to HPC, and then ultimately to City Council. So I think maybe I've covered most of the stuff, haven't I, Sherri? So we want to make sure you understand how the work goes, and what you, you know, why we're always telling you that we're sort of, you know, have a struggle with priorities, so. So with that, I'm opening questions if you have about future agenda items and when things are going to come back. Nope, okay, moving on.
You were anticipating the 601 Crest View to come back by the 17th.
And we just a date of certain.
We can't
We continued it to a date of certain. I'm just wondering, with each of these, how far ahead of the meeting date?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. How far ahead of the meeting date are the applicants required to provide you with complete documentation? Is it seven days, 10 days?
No, we can have it seven days. We actually need to have something noticed, a minimum of 10 day, well, two weeks, really, wouldn't you say, Sherri? Two weeks before. It always seems like a lot of time lapses between minute, between meetings, but our agendas go out Friday, and we have to have them prepared for Sherri to copy them and get them out and post them to the web on Friday. So we, as planners, have to really have them done on Thursday, and then if staff is fairly, fairly complex, we have to have them done really on Wednesday in order for me to review them, and possibly the city attorney. So we get back till we have a huge lead time, so if I have to have it by Wednesday before the meeting, it's a week before the meeting, I got to have my stuff done, that means I really have to have a, a full two weeks in advance, and that, and that means we're not working on anything else, we're going to drop everything else we're working on, so, so, and that can't always happen, there are days where, you know, there's, you know, red, you know, fires that come in, so, you know, whether it's building or code enforcement, we can't always make, we don't always know that we're going to get a full eight hours to work on something, so even that's calling it pretty tight. So that's why we always tell you that, when someone says they're going to continue, we continue to the next meeting, they pretty much have to have it into us by the next day or the next day after that.
Okay, so it's, it's a week or two before this date, at that point, you're going to know whether that case is really going to come up or not.
Right, and so, so, so if we moved it to August 17th, then we would probably need to know, we would probably need to have everything by August 3rd.
Yeah.
Well, you do have to, for sure, because of legal noticing.
Right, correct.
We don't want to notice something when we don't even have it.
And I
Yeah.
And so we're just, we're just trying to make this more efficient, because what happens is every time we have to call somebody, or we have to write a letter, or we have to pick something up, the applicant gets charged for it, you know, because we charge, you know, for time for processing. So not only is it kind of inefficient, but it's also inefficient financially for them, so we, we really don't want to pick up on and review something that's not complete, because then you're, you know, kind of looking at things two and three and four times. We prefer it to be an all-inclusive package-in and have staff look at it once.
That's why I ask, the August 3rd meeting is two weeks from tonight.
Correct.
So on 712 Drown, do you have what you need?
We, my understanding is yes, and we went over it extensively today, and it got noticed in the paper today, correct, Sherri?
It got submitted to the paper, or not seen on the Friday's paper.
Right.
Yeah, now it's only Friday papers.
This has been, this, this has been a long time, this project, we've worked diligently with the applicants, so hopefully we'll be ready to go. But, but we, we do try to not push, we push as much as we can to move things forward expeditiously, but sometimes we are, you know, we're, we're asking for something, and then we find out the last minute, you know, that something changes, that, that just happens on occasion. So like, like the Crest View, I think is a good example, when we did 2, 601 Crest View, we originally thought it was just a change in the paint and the roof, and then, then it was like, oh, no, it's this cabana, and then he's like, well, how did you not know about the cabana? Well, the cabana was, you know, kind of sitting over in the building department, so sometimes that kind of hap, that, those types of things happen, and then we have to renotice. We prefer not to do that, we prefer it to be just kind of wrapped up with a bow on it to take it forward. But anyhow, so does he have any other questions? No?
Thank you, staff, thank you for your great reports tonight. Commissioner Quilisi is going to give us the highlights of the City Council meeting from July 12th. Please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Two major agenda topics that were covered at the July 12th meeting were short-term rentals, or STRs, and the city budget. There were several speakers that praised the council for enforcing the STR code, but there were also a number of speakers that, that pled hardship if they could not make financial use of STRs on their property. So it went back and forth quite a bit. Staff recommended three STR actions, that is, direction to the city manager and city attorney to do something. First was to draft an ordinance to increase the maximum fine for a misdemeanor, and that includes having an STR in a residential zone. There are infractions, and there are misdemeanors if you, if you violate the municipal code. The infractions are minor, the misdemeanors can be expensive. Anyway, that, it was proposed to draft an ordinance to increase the maximum fine for a misdemeanor, which applies in this case to, from $500 to $1,000 per violation, and violation would be one night's rental. And that failed 2 to 3, with Blatz and Clapp, yes, Wierich, Haney, and Lauren, no. Then recommendation to draft an ordinance prohibiting advertising unlawful, that is, anywhere in a residential zone, short-term transient and vacation rentals of less than 30 days, that is the definition of an STR. Infractions would include both property owners and real estate agents or STR brokers. And that passed 5 to 0, so staff will draft an ordinance prohibiting the advertising. And another one to develop an RFP, to solicit proposals for a short-term rental contract labor, that is, someone who could be a specialized code compliance officer, I think, for STRs. And the, the council said, go ahead and draft and develop an RFP, but city staff and city manager know, do not at this time have council leave to actually hire someone that would come if conditions change and if, if an RFP is approved. Member Clapp suggested consideration of an ordinance similar to Santa Monica's, quote, "private attorney general" end quote provision, which she said allows private citizens to sue STR violators on behalf of the city. No formal motion was made, no second, no vote. The general feeling was that council was opposed to letting citizens sue each other over this issue. Also, a local family, the lady's name was Cindy Carlson-Burne, they're in the aerial mapping business, and she said they have made drone flights over the city at 7,500-foot altitude, or about 6,700 feet above the ground, to ferret out STRs, and they report a total of 252 SCRs, STRs in the valley, in the city and outside the city. They said 43 of 60 in-city STRs are still operating. It was not clear to me, it's still not clear to me, how they determined that. I don't know how a drone can figure out whether rental is being used. And they said that independent property managers and realtors are still advertising 26 STRs in the city. So the new draft ordinance will, will address that. Second, the city's 2016-17 budget was passed pro forma on June 28th, meeting the state requirement to do that by June 30th. But it was everyone's understanding that it would be further defined, not to say modified, but made clearer in detail at one or more subsequent meetings. And in fact, most of the budget discussion involved allocating what was $100,000 for community outreach. Now, this is things like the Green Coalition, the Museum, Independence Day Committee, and stuff like that. And the council has held a couple of special sessions and a couple of short, closed sessions on these topics as well. But after assurances from City Finance Director Livingston that income had recently increased and expenses had recently decreased, the council approved $50,000 to the Green Coalition, which is what they requested, $75,000 to the Museum, which is what they requested for this year. Considerable discussion as well about whether the museum was paying for building maintenance on the museum building, which actually belongs to the city, and whether that should be the city's responsibility, and the city attorney is to report on the contract about that, and $5,000 to the Independence Day Committee. So they actually wound up appropriating $130,000 when the original budget said $100,000. The fire department had a petting zoo out in the street here with a couple of new trucks, a heavy rescue truck and a new engine, I think, equipped with rescue tools like winches and chainsaws and all kind of great stuff. The Ventura County Junior Fair Board came by, left a poster for the, for the city, and talked about all kinds of wonderful events, concerts by Patti LaBelle and Trace Atkins, among others, so. And Greg Grant produced, or presented work by a city consultant to push back on FEMA's proposed flood control district maps. This falls in the category of boring but important. Those, those maps designate the 100-year flood areas and require property owners to carry what turns out to be fairly expensive flood insurance as a result. The consultant's analysis, the, the city hired a consultant to go look at FEMA's proposed map, and the consultant's analysis got FEMA to reduce the size of the proposed 100-year flood plain and remove about 300 parcels in the middle of the city from flood insurance requirements, which, assuming an average bill of about 1,300, which Greg Grant said was his bill, he lives down Creek Road, off Creek Road somewhere, that's saving the citizens about $400,000 in annual premiums, so everybody was pretty happy about that. And that's, oh, and Councilman Wierich reported that the Medical Marijuana Group, which is an ad hoc committee of the council, I think, now meets every Thursday at 3:30. So if you're interested in the topic, Thursdays at 3:30. They're also going to buy two more trolleys to replace the two oldest trolleys.
Is, I have a burning question, is Joan Jett going to be at the Ventura County Fair?
I don't remember that name.
Oh, wow.
But Trace Atkins will be there.
Okay. Thank you so much. Now, I believe you also have a report from the MAC meeting.
On the MAC meeting, that was, in fact, last night, down at the Oakview Community Center. The county planning commission and planning director and her staff, she was there, by the way, Kathleen's counterpart, they are beginning a four-year process to update the county general plan. There is, at this time, an Ojai Valley area plan, which we all heard about, talking about the oil wells up in the Upper Ojai and stuff like that. There are going to be four workshops, this was the first of four, at each of a number of locations around the county, but there will be three more in Oakview for the Ojai Valley area through the fall of 2018. And then the general plan update is required by 2020, required by the county supervisors. So last night, they set up four activity stations and gave us all a bunch of little paper dots. Oh, that comment Oh, comment cards, yes. Anyway, they wanna know where everybody that attended the meeting lived and how they wish to be communicated with. Mostly email, they were grateful for that. Then there was a place where there were a bunch of posters on the wall that looked like they were standardized posters that they're using here and Oxnard and, you know, around the county. Okay. What I love about my community, top five, the biggest challenges for the future and improvements for the future. Sort of sounded like solutions to the problems or challenges. Plus, they had the comment cards. And so we all got little paper stick, little paper dots and we walked around voting on things or adding new categories to some of these posters. The plan is to integrate the Ojai Valley area plan into the Ventura County general plan. It is not a comprehensive Ojai Valley area plan update per se. The Ojai Valley area plan will still exist, but it will be within the Ventura County general plan. And the actual format of that is TBD. The Ventura County staff that was there, and they were planning commission staff and also supervisors or Bennett's office staff, they will summarize our inputs for the planning, the Ventura County Planning Commission and then the Board of Supervisors. They were also doing a public health survey at the same time. And there are in fact focus group meetings. It wasn't clear when or where to me.
Yeah, I think what they're gonna be doing is, because they didn't really announce it that quick, excuse me. They didn't really, they mentioned the focus groups and I think they're gonna send it out by email, if you signed up and got on the email list, as to what those focus groups are and the contact information.
Well, they said they're gonna have some subject matter experts participate.
Right.
And then have the public participate. And it wasn't clear how each of those was gonna happen. But they do plan to have meetings on water, transportation, air quality, housing and probably some other topics like cultural resources. I don't know. And that's all I got out of it, except I was really intrigued in the fourth station, improvements for the future or solutions to some of our challenges that three people voted on they wanted beaches in the Ojai Valley area.
Beaches?
Beaches. It seems to me it'd be very disruptive to create beaches up here.
I think what happened was at the beginning, they kept talking about, you know, the micro level as, meaning like the Ojai Valley. And then they said the macro, which was the entire county. So I think it was a little confusing-
Okay.
That you were talking specifically about the valley-
People were voting that they like beaches, not that they want some here.
But they also kept saying make sure you include the entire county. So I think they probably could have, you know, segregated a little bit more at the beginning. But I think that's what happened.
Yeah, I think they were using a common set of posters, but I didn't expect-
They did. Because the beaches was, you know, it was all printed, pre-printed and-
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's what it was.
But, so very interesting. And they're just gonna work on this for the next two years of, of public meetings and then two years to grind up all the details and put out a new general plan.
Just one quick little addition to that. So some of the areas they are also concentrating on is healthy communities. It's bringing, you know, public health issues. They're gonna be doing a climate action plan. And also sustainability and resilience are gonna be part of it. And the guiding principles are the economy, health and environment. It's the three legs of sustainability.
Though they, they did mention cultural resources because that's a hot topic in the Ojai Valley area.
That's true.
Yeah. End of report.
Thank you so much. Excellent report. Commissioner Nolan, do you want to enlighten us on Complete Streets? Or do we, is it no report?
Actually, there's no report. Although, you know, I will say that today we had a four-hour editing session for the draft, preliminary draft master plan. I'm so proud of these volunteers that come in. We've been doing this quite regularly the last couple of months and we're getting a lot done. But I'll leave it at that. And I know we'll have more to report at the beginning of August. Steve, anything you wanna add to that?
No, I don't think so. We have, we have a standard group of six to 10 people that come out every time presumably that they're not out of town and providing us with very good feedback. And we're not only editing this document, we're proofreading it. And the more eyes you have on it, the better there, of course. But I think we're getting to the point now where we have some pretty solid goals and suggestions for pedestrians and for bicycle traffic and for calming, let's say, calming of vehicular traffic within the city. Then we'll just have to see, you know, the details are to be worked out in subsequent projects through Public Works mostly, I would imagine.
Great. Okay. I just wanna note that I have a conflict for City Council aides on August 9th. So I'm gonna ask Commissioner Jagiello to switch with me for the 23rd when he appears. So, but I may come knocking on one of your doors if he can't do it, so.
Ready. We'll be there.
Okay. So with that, we don't have the city council member here tonight. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, I think I will call it good.
That'll be a record.